This regular board meeting of the Socorro ISD Board of Trustees will come to order, please. The date is Monday, March 18, 2024. The time is 6:02, and we have a confirmed quorum. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. One of our outstanding dual-language students from Bill Sibert School will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. In the school's dual-language academy, first grader Isabel Chilson is learning to read, write, and speak in both English and Spanish. By seizing the opportunity to become bilingual and biliterate at a young age, Isabel is not only enhancing her language skills, but also gaining a better understanding of the world around her. The program has allowed Isabel to explore different cultures and celebrate their traditions and customs. Last year, she and her classmates had fun dressing up for United Nations Day and Mexican Independence Day. Recently, Isabel and her mom joined the school's Latino Literacy Club, where they enjoy reading bilingual children's books like Teo and Palo Verde. Outside of school, Isabel is very active in gymnastics, ballet, and T-ball. When she grows up, Isabel plans to become a doctor so she can help people. Good luck, Isabel. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Isabel. Please be seated. Let's give Isabel a round of applause, please. Good job, Isabel. Thank you. All right, continuing with our agenda, we have superintendent's comments. Dr. Carmen is out ill today. In his place, we have Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Vazquez, please.
Good evening, President Nakata, members of the board. I'd like to start off this month's comments by first introducing the newest leaders to Socorro ISD. Please help me welcome Steven Olivas, the new Assistant Principal at Waco Elementary School. Also, please help me welcome Emmanuel Lothmer as the new Assistant Principal of Montwood High School. And finally, please help me welcome Nidia Moreno Olgin as the new Assistant Principal of Socorro Middle School. I have a couple of additional comments. First of all, I'd like to thank the Americas and Socorro Mariachi groups for performing this evening. As always, they were amazing, don't you agree?
Yes.
Both groups earned superior ratings at the UIL State Mariachi Contest last month. This is the second time for Americas and the fourth time for Socorro to earn the highest rating possible. Congratulations to these excellent mariachi ensembles on their state championships. And finally, on behalf of Dr. Carmen, I'm very happy to welcome everyone back from Spring Intercession. I hope it was a relaxing and enjoyable time for all. As we get back to work, I know the amazing students and staff of Team SISD will realize many more achievements and give us lots more to celebrate as we close out the school year. This concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Vazquez. Okay, we'll continue with Board Honors. Mr. Escobar, please.
Good evening, President Nakata, members of the board. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you will all please step down to receive our honorees. First, we will recognize students who qualified for the 2024 State Visual Arts Scholastic Event Competition. Seventeen outstanding SISD students qualified for the statewide event hosted by the Texas Art Education Association. These talented students will travel to San Marcos, Texas at the end of April to attend the competition, where jurors from across the US will assess their artwork. Congratulations to these exceptional artists and their teachers. From Americas High School, Arlette Almeraz. Allison Rodriguez Lara. Their teacher, Samuel Munoz. Representing her student from Eastlake High School, we have our teacher Lucia Cimental. From Pebble Hills High School, Evan Bray. Ashlyn Kachupin. Their teacher is Ivan Ortega. Also representing students from Pebble Hills High School, Julian Vidalas. From Socorro High School, Eileen Raso. Teacher Abel Sazado. Also from Socorro High School, Liliana Dresza-Marcas. And her teacher, Lourdes Aguilar. If we can have you all back to the front for a photo with our board, please. And just a quick note, that the photos taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, are posted on our website. There is a camera or smiley face icon on the bottom right-hand corner that'll take you to SmugMug, and then these photos are available for free high-resolution download. Parents also are welcome to come up behind Mr. Largo and take photos if they'd like. All right, keep smiling, keep smiling. Congratulations once again. Next, we honor ten exceptional students who have been named as 2024 Texas Music Educators Association All-State Musicians. This prestigious recognition is given to students who excel in band and choir. The students selected for this honor are considered to be among the top 2% of musicians across Texas. As part of this honor, students performed with some of the best musicians in the state at the TMEA Convention in San Antonio. Congratulations to these promising musicians. From Americas High School, Eliza Sky Lopez. From Eastlake High School, Iliana Smith. And Christopher Olivas. Aria Labrador. Esperanza Herrera. Choir Director at Eastlake High School, Liliana Labrador. From Eldorado High School, Ricardo Luera. The Band Director, Cesar Inojos. From Montwood High School, Joaquin Porras. Choir Director, Nabil Gonzalez. From Pebble Hills High School, Andy Avila. Cesar Cervantes. And the Pebble Hills Band Director is Maximo Sierra. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please. Congratulations once again. Next, we will recognize SISD student athletes who qualified and participated in the 2024 UIL 6A Wrestling State Meet. These talented wrestlers have done an outstanding job representing Team SISD and the entire El Paso region, showing off their exceptional skills and athleticism. We are proud to announce that one of these remarkable athletes, Erica Cobos, from Americas High School, emerged as a state champion for the second year in a row. Congratulations to all of these fantastic student athletes for their remarkable achievements. Representing Erica Cobos and her teammate Leonidas Fernandez, who were unable to be here, are Americas High School Coaches Eric Garcia. And Devonte Cook. From Montwood High School, Margarita Norris. Gavin Ramos. Their coach is Oscar Norris. From Pebble Hills High School, Juan Hernandez. Also from Pebble Hills, Dorian Jaramillo. And their coach, Carlos Panigagua. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please. All right, congratulations once again. Next, we recognize an SISD girls' basketball team for their impressive accomplishments of winning the 2023-24 UIL Varsity Basketball 1-6A District and a 6A by-district championship. This talented team had a remarkable overall record of 27-7 and a district record of 14-2. Additionally, several of their players were recognized with First Team, All-District, and All-Academic honors. Congratulations to the Americas High School Girls' Varsity Basketball Team. Tamar Alexander. Nasaya Atkins. Mary Brooks. Jada Carejo. Ashley Dempsey. Jaden Herrera. Kylie Marquez. Kalen Medrano. Michaela Vigil. Their coaches, Elizabeth Bolden. Albert Garcia. And head coach, Tisha King. If we can have you all back to the front, please, for a photo. Congratulations once again. Now, we recognize an SISD boys' basketball team for winning the 2023-24 UIL 1-6A Varsity District Championship. The district champions had a fantastic season and finished with an impressive record of 29 wins, only five losses. Congratulations to the Americas High School Boys' Varsity Basketball Team. Christian Vaca. Brady Duggan. Jordan Hi. Mario Olgin. Matt Magdaleno. Aiden Marquez. Anthony Miranda. Josh Picardino. Rene Vicencio. And they're led by head coach Mike Brooks. If we can have you all back to the front for a photo, please. That should work. Congratulations once again. Next, we honor five SISD high school mariachi ensembles for qualifying for the 2024 UIL State Mariachi Festival. These outstanding musicians competed with the top mariachi groups in the state, and SISD is the only district in the city to have five high schools advance to the state competition. Two of these ensembles, absolutely. Two of these ensembles, Americas High School Mariachi Los Pioneros and Socorro High School Mariachi Los Gavianes, earned the top Division I Superior Rating at the state competition. Congratulations to all five of these talented mariachi ensembles. For tonight's recognition, we'll begin with Eastlake High School's Mariachi Falco. Pablo Chavez. Mario Gonzalez. Jackie Gonzalez. Emily Guerrero. Giselle Guerrero. Esperanza Herrera. Abraham Machado. Omar Mendiola. Jaylee Mercado. Directors are Cindy Cabada. Jessica Hernandez. Daniel Rivera. And their head director is Steve Hernandez. If we can have you back up to the front for a photo, please. Congratulations once again. We will continue with Eldorado High School's Mariachi Azteca. Elián Avalos. Over Barrios. Jesús Carrera. Gabriel Hernandez. Ricardo Luera. Ana Mendez. Cairo Moran. Isabella Olivas. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please. Congratulations once again. We'll continue recognizing Pebble Hills High School Mariachi Los Guerrero. Noe Ariano. Natsumi Severa. Omar Chavaria. Evani Edwards-Cooksey. Isaiah Flores. Nathan Hernandez Cruz. Olivia Jenkins. Austin Little. Maya Murgah. Nicolas Myers. Nicholas Myers. Luisa Noriega. Samantha Ortiz Ponse. Christian Osorio. Sofia Sierra. Gael Soto. Chantel Stefani. Devin Tabarez. Diego Torres. Geraldine Vazquez. And their director, Daniel Reyes. If we can have you all back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations once again. We'll continue with America's High Schools Mariachi Los Pioneros. José Alcala, Valerie Burgos Campos, Kayla Espración, Gabriel Gómez, Eliza López, Angelina Márquez, Ariana Márquez, Caitlin Martínez, Isenyah Martínez Ocasio, Sofia Montoya, Hector Muñoz, Jared Murillo, Sebastian Ochoa, José Pezrosa, Rhiannon Romero, Saymari Rosada Cabrera, Monique Rubio, Zoe Siquieros, Nicolas Villa, Mauricio Uranga, Directors, Rocío Mandriques, José Luis Rios is our head director. Congratulations. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations once again. We'll continue with Socorro High School's Mariachi Los Gavianes. Kiana Armada, Leslie Delatorre, Fernando Cangas, Edgar Cordero, Briseida Espin, Aiden García, Genesis García, César González, Alessandra Herrera, Annabel Irigoyen, Sergio Quisada, Alan Torres, Paola Treviso, Iris Ugale, Mia Villarreal. Directors, José Parada, and they're led by Roger Rosales. Congratulations once again. Now, we salute SISD's Purchasing Department for receiving the prestigious TASBO Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations. This award recognizes Texas school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and education services service centers that are committed to following professional standards in the acquisition of goods and services. Each year, TASBO accepts applications for new certification and recertification. This is the 13th year Socorro ISD has received this prestigious award. Congratulations to our purchasing department. Lydia Aguirre, Judith González, Aida Escobedo, Ricardo González, Diana Hens, Jessica Lerma, Julio Mansinas Rosales, Maria Morales, Director of Purchasing Gabriela García Muñoz, and the purchasing is led by our Chief Financial Officer, Victoria Perez. If we can have you up to the front for a photo, please? Thank you for congratulations again. Tonight, we also congratulate SISD's Financial Services Department, which has been awarded the prestigious TASBO Award of Excellence in Financial Management. Established in 2020, this award is given to Texas school districts and education service centers that have implemented professional standards, best practices, and innovations in financial reporting. The criteria to qualify for the Award of Excellence in Financial Management are stringent, based on financial accounting and reporting guidelines identified by the TEA Financial Accountability System Resource Guide. This is the second time SISD's Financial Services Division has won this award. Congratulations to the outstanding Financial Services Department. Representing the team tonight, Lupe García, Lourdes Herrera, Laura Rodriguez, Martha Minjares, Kayla González, Michelle Uizar, Gabriela García, Budgeting Director Susan Olson, Business Services Director Renee Vargas, and the team is led by Chief Financial Officer Victoria Perez. It'd be nice, thank you, sir. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations once again. We'll have a special guest presenter for our next recognition. For tonight's final recognition, we are proud to announce that SISD has earned the top School Public Relations Award in the state for a third time. For a third time from the Texas School Public Relations Association, or TSPRA. This recognition was awarded for the district's New School Choice in Socorro ISD campaign, which won TSPRA's prestigious Platinum Award for 2023. This award acknowledges a year-long project that has demonstrated the highest standards of excellence. Furthermore, the PR team also received more than 40 additional awards for outstanding communication and marketing achievements. These awards reflect the department's pride in representing SISD in the community, the region, and beyond. The members of the award-winning public relations team are Andy Perez, Andrew Campos, Acadius Largo, Ruben Espinoza, Lara Acosta, Devin Carrasco, Vanessa Salazar, Maya Kurtley, Kristy Flores Jones, and of course, Daniel Escobar. This concludes tonight's recognitions. Thank you. Continuing with item number six, Board of Trustee Business, we have a Consider Approval of School Library Month Proclamation, April 2024. Ms. Sparks.
Board President Mr. Nahara and members of the board. Good evening. I'm Marcy Sparks. I'm the Library Services Coordinator for Socorro ISD. This April, the American Association of School Librarians will observe the 39th Anniversary of School Library Month. It is celebrated in conjunction with National Library It is celebrated in conjunction with National Library Week on April 7 through the 13th. The theme this year is Ready, Set, Library. It promotes the idea that in our always online world, libraries give us a green light to something truly special. A place to connect with others, learn new skills, and focus on what matters most. Our libraries are here for our students throughout their educational journeys, to better prepare them for college, career, and life in general. Tonight, I am joined by Americas High School Libertas Academy Seniors Jose Alcala and Sofia Montoya, who also just presented mariachi. Jose and Sofia organized this year's Read Across Americas feeder pattern literacy night. Elementary students from the feeder pattern participated in read alouds, games, arts and crafts, and all of them were led by high school students. Jose and Sofia planned the event alongside their librarians at Americas, Nisa Harden and Oscar Bortas. These two students truly demonstrate the power of reading as we celebrate libraries. They will present the proclamation.
Whereas school libraries are a fun community for students to belong, and all students deserve a well-managed library to provide for free expression and access to ideas.
Whereas school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that will encourage growth in knowledge, and...
Whereas school libraries provide digital and print books to encourage children to read for pleasure, and...
Whereas the Board of Education has entrusted the school librarian in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information, to provide literature appreciation activities, and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student, and...
Whereas the school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure the library program is an integral part of the instructional program of the school that fosters both excellence and equity in education, and...
Whereas the school librarians of Socorro Independent School District have dedicated themselves to work for quality library programs for all students.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby proclaim April 2024 as School Library Month in all their public schools, and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and the community of Socorro Independent School District to recognize and support this action, and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month.
Thank you. At this time, administration recommends consideration and approval of the proclamation as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Pereira, seconded by Mr. Castellano. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Continuing, Consider Approval of Month of the Military Child Proclamation. Dr. Graham.
Good evening, President Nahara and esteemed board members. Just as a reminder, we serve about 5,846 military-connected students this year, and their families. And we have 47 Purple Star-recognized campuses, and it's a tribute to the work that our schools are doing to accommodate and serve and teach our military-connected students. And we have a proclamation to present to you. Usually, we bring little ones to read it. This time, we changed it around, so we have seniors that will be reading the proclamation from Eastlake High School and Eldorado and Americas High School. And introduce yourselves, and let's read the proclamation.
My name is Jada Gadsden. I am a senior at Eldorado High School.
My name is Andrea Yano, and I'm a senior at Americas High School.
My name is Nicholas Mathy Peoples, and I am a senior at Eastlake High School. The Month of the Military Child, and April 17, 2024, is known as Purple Up for Military Kids' Day. Whereas Socorro Independent School District recognizes the selfless acts of service performed by its brave members of the military and their devoted families. And whereas military families continue to face that unique burden of multiple deployments, often causing uncertainty and constant upending of their daily lives and routines. And whereas military families themselves know of the sacrifice borne by military children, but their important contributions can often go unnoticed by the general public. And whereas Socorro Independent School District is home to more than 5,846 military children who have at least one parent serving in the military, and...
As whereas military children are a source of pride and honor, and we recognize the often unsung sacrifices made by them, and commend them for their support and dedication to the families in service, to the protection and advancement of citizens' rights and freedom. And whereas the month of April has been celebrated as the month of the military child since 1986. Recognizing the importance of military children and expressing gratitude for their sacrifice, and...
Whereas a month-long salute to military children will encourage local communities to provide direct support to military children and families. Therefore, we, Dr. Nate Carmen, Superintendent of the Socorro Independent School District, and the Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Month of the Military Child, and the week of April 15, 2024, at SISD as Purple Up for Military Kids' Week.
Thank you. So, we encourage all of you for your next board meetings that are in April to come in dressed in purple and to honor our military. And at this time, we recommend approval of the proclamation. And just a clarification, the national day is the 15th, but SISD celebrates that entire week as the to honor our kiddos throughout the campuses. Any questions? Okay. Recommendation to get approval for the proclamation, please.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Pereira, seconded by Ms. Macias. Any further discussion?
Yes. I just want to say thank you to the military kids for everything you guys do while your parents or parent is deployed. But just not the active duty, but also those kids that were kids of veterans as well, because they at one point had to go through it. So, thank you, guys, for toughening it out and being there and being the support in the household. So, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on with to open forum. Each person who signed up was provided a copy of the open forum basic rules and advised when they signed up that policy BED applies to the process. Please respect the process during your presentation. A reminder, each speaker is given three minutes. We will proceed to open forum. Our first speaker is Sammy Carejo. Our next speaker, then. So, Mr. Carejo, you're saying you don't want to speak? No, sir. You signed up first. It's your turn, please.
It's always a pleasure to see you, Mr. Nahara.
Thank you, sir.
Consistently doing the same thing you do. So, quick question. Speaking of Mr. Nahara, as you guys have seen in the news recently, SISD is under scrutiny for a TEA investigation. Now, I know we don't want to talk about it too much, because that doesn't look too good. But last month, I was interviewed by KVIA, and I was asked, if you couldn't ask Mr. Nahara a question, what would you ask him? Why? Why, Mr. Nahara? Why did you go on the news and tell the media that you're open for any help that was possible? When for the last two and a half years, anytime anything having to do with transparency, you have shot down. Anytime we came up here demanding that we do the external audit, you shot it down. You have stood here for the last two and a half years, talking down to people, disrespecting people, even stopping, preventing other board members to speak. And you have the nerve to go out on the news and say, oh, we're open for it. You have the nerve to say that the $33 million budget had nothing to do with the TEA investigation. You need to take a look deep inside yourself there, Mr. Nahara. Your como se llama? Your como se llama is in a sling right now. And right now, you and AFT, who's been very quiet lately, are trying to figure out how you can get out of it. April is the month of the military child, right? We're going to honor them. You need to honor them 12 months a year. You need to honor every single student that's out here. I appreciate that they're here, and you're going to honor them. But you need to honor them. How? By doing the right thing. You need to honor them by voting for the right things. For the last 12 years, Mr. Nahara, you have voted 90% of the time, 90, 94% of the time, for the items that are under investigation for TEA. So, thank you for the dog and pony show, but at the end of the... That's a $5 fine. Anyway, in some other organizations, we do that. You owe me $5. Anyway. So, how dare you? How dare you do that? We've been pushing for transparency, and now you go to the media? Wednesday, there are going to be results. They're going to be released. And right now, we don't have our fearless leader here. So, trust me, it's not only on you, Mr. Carmen as well. But I will tell everybody right now that on Wednesday, they're going to try to pin everything on him. And I will tell you what. From 2022 moving on, absolutely, we're going to put his como se llama in the hot seat. But previous to that, Mr. Nahara, Mr. Guerra, Mrs. Nahara, we're going to hold you accountable. So, when you go up and you start blaming everything on Mr. Carmen, we're going to hold you equally accountable. It is time that we move on. And for those who don't understand, TEA is not just going to come in here, wipe everybody out. No, they're going to come in here, and they're going to have the ability to... 30-second extension? Either way, I'll continue on Wednesday. I yield my time. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Ms. Rosie Perez, please.
Good evening, President Nahara and members of the board. My name is Rosie Perez, and I proudly represent the members of West Texas Alliance. On February 21, 2024, when we heard that the district was entering into an agreement with TEA to authorize a conservatorship, the collective response was one of shock and disappointment. As a former middle school teacher in SISD, it saddens me that our district finds itself in this situation. Being under any type of oversight from TEA means that we failed students. We are an education organization, and our primary role is to advocate for our members. However, as public school employees, the heart of our group and the basis for our advocacy is steeped in the passion we have for serving students. What we do for our members, we do with the best interest of students. I am confident that we can restore the stellar reputation of SISD. But with that being said, business as usual can no longer be the way to get us back on track. We have submitted ideas to you for consideration, but we will need to have a seat at the table to provide insight, feedback, and most importantly, to ensure accountability by the district to do what is right for kids and employees. You've heard me speak at almost every school board meeting or any special meeting this year. We brought the issue of the special education clerks being removed and the excessive burden this has placed on our diagnosticians and our speech-language pathologists. More importantly, the reduction of or missed services for students. The return of spec clerks was tabled by this board, and we have not seen this issue revisited by this board. If you want employees to remain loyal to the district, to support initiatives, to recruit employees to the district, and to weather the storm with SISD, with both the TEA conservatorship and the budget deficit, there must be transparency, support, follow-through, and constant collaboration. That special meeting on March 6 raised several concerns for our members, and we felt that it was misleading about district enrollment and the cost of TRS active care to its employees. Our task force is working on feedback and ideas for your consideration. Listen to your employees that work directly with students. They offer the most valuable information. Their passion is evident in the work that they do every single day. West Texas Alliance is committed to working with you to move past these situations. We can sit here and blame those that are no longer or will no longer be here in the district, or we can come together to do what is best for kids and solve the issues. Thank you.
Continuing then with district reports. 8A Districtwide Intruder Detection Audit Report Findings. Mr. Livermore.
Mr. President, Board of Trustees. An intruder detection audit was conducted in the district by Region 19. Findings will be shared with the district's School Safety and Security Committee and the Board of Trustees. A plan of action is in place, and will be shared with the trustees tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Livermore. Continuing with our facilities report. Ms. Fierro.
Good evening, Board President Nahara, members of the board. Liliana Fierro, I'm the Director of Facilities and Construction. And tonight, I will present to you the Facilities and Construction Report for the March month. That's the 2017 bond program budget, full size. So, you can have the entire information in one sheet, okay? But we're going to discuss that later after my update, okay? So, starting with SAC2. As you know, right now, we have only two projects pending to close as part of the bond. SAC2 and the new maintenance building. SAC2, right now, we have 80% of completion, and the contractor is working inside, outside. It's a lot of movement right now, trying to comply with the deadline. The substantial completion is expected to be May 23. That's substantial completion. The contractor will have up to 60 days to complete the punch list. So, after that, we will let the board members when we can do the ribbon cutting and when the party can use the facility. So, next, I will present to you a video showing the progress. This video was made by Ben General's Contractor, and I hope you enjoy it. The entrance at the visitor's side, that's where the contractor is working. His crew is working in the parking lot. Back of the district building, finance and locker rooms. In the corner where the panding area is, you can see the bus parking over there in that big circle. Now, a view of SAC2 and SAC1. Entrance on the visitor's side. Terrace on the district's building. Interior photos, fixtures. Press box. Windows at the press box. Building, district building. Inside of the press box. And area of the VIP or press box area. What do you think? I think it's an amazing project. We're getting there, we're getting there, almost done. Okay, you have any questions for SAC 2? Okay, moving on to the new maintenance building. So right now, the status of the design phase, we already complete 100% of the schematic design and design development. The construction documents are in the 20% and the 100% will be delivered May 17. After all the 100% drawings are completed and submitted to the district, will be reviewed and then will be submitted to the city for permitting. After we obtain the permit, we're gonna go out to bid for this project, once we have the 100% drawings. Any questions on this project? Okay, so the next portion of my presentation is the 2017 Bond Program Budget. So as you know, I've been presenting to you the construction cost only. So you can see in your report, items or columns GH and I. That's the information that has been provided to you. Now, that's just a portion of the overall program. Now I'm presenting to you the overall, overall 2017 bond. Now, let me explain what each of the columns represent and then I will explain the totals, okay? First, project name, the category. We have elementary auxiliary gyms, high school improvements, new construction, reconstruction of Socorro High School, athletic improvements, and support services. The next column is the approved construction procurement method. It could be construction manager risk, host Seymour, and the CSP. That is the competitive sales proposal. Column A is a regional approved bond budget that includes FFNE and that is for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, IT, land purchase, consulting services, and construction cost. And that's the information that was presented to the community and to the board for approval. Total of 448 and 500 million. Now, if we go to column B, you will see bond interest allocation. Total of 14.6 million. That interest was allocated to a specific projects, okay? To be completed, to be closed, so that money was used for that. Now, if you go to column C, that's your total revised bond budget. That means that the 448.5 million plus the interest allocation will give us 463.1 million. That's a total amount for the entire bond program. Next columns, part of the planning FFNE, IT, and consulting services. Column D, land purchase. Column E refers to the movable furniture, fixtures, and equipment that have not permanent connection to the structure of the building. So FFNE will have their own accounts and construction will have their own accounts. We cannot transfer money or funds from FFNE to construction and vice versa without board approval, okay? Now, that's the column E. Moving to column F, that's consulting services. It could include, well, also include architect, engineering, and testing services for the entire bond program. If we see the column GH and A has a mention, that information has been provided to you. So I just add it to this report. Column J, total project cost. For those projects that are already, already closed and approved by the board, that amount is final. But, for example, if you go to item 6, Mountwood High School Improvements, construction is done and has been approved, construction cost only. But the design of the parking lots, that was part of the bond. So, as I have my note here, estimated total project cost, pending consulting services, final payment. Now, I can tell you that column F, item 6, 2.6 million that was allocated for consulting services would not exceed that amount. So the final cost, column J, total of 35.1 million would not increase, okay? I am sure about that. Now, for those projects that we know are still pending, SAC 2 and Maintenance and Facilities Building, those I have for final credit change order and final construction cost, SAC 2 to be determined because it's not done. For Maintenance and Facilities Building, I have to be determined because again, we don't have the cost. But for Maintenance and Facilities Building, I have an estimated cost of 5.5 because that's the amount that is being allocated to this project and it's in the financial reports, okay? That's what we have for that project. Now, column J, total cost. If we go down to the totals, the 468.1 million, that's the total amount that we need to complete the bond program. And if you deduct column C and column A, 463.1 minus 468.1 million, you will get a negative 4.9, almost 5 million. That amount is the expected estimated amount to complete the 2017 Bond Program. That's what we need. That's what we have in our financials reports, okay? Now, to explain a little bit more, column K. That's your balance for all the projects. For example, for those projects that have the numbers in black, those are remaining balance from the closed projects. So for instance, El Dorado, Mountwood, New Combo, and Socorro have remaining balance. That means that we have this available funding to complete SAC 2. Now, if we transfer that money to SAC 2, we still need the 5 million, okay? But also, I can tell you that because that money to complete SAC 2 is in our accounts, we can close SAC 2 with the budget that we have now, okay? Now, if we, we need the 5 million to complete SAC 2 or to complete the new maintenance building. That will be a decision, what project will get those, those 5 million from any, I mean, other source, right? And so that will be the, the final, not final, but the expected estimated amount to complete the bond. It could change, it could increase, or it could be lower. But that will depend on the final numbers for SAC 2 and new, new building. Do you have any questions at this point?
Just wanna thank the visual. I think this truly helps me truly get an understanding of what we've received. I also like how you mentioned that the Weaver Report, it was July 2017 to March 2023. So truly, what you did is you gave us the complete picture because that picture was just until March. So what I heard you say, just, just from my brain, is that right now, within the bond project, we have enough to finish SAC 2? And we've already encumbered, what is it, 800,000 for maintenance and facilities?
That's an estimated amount for consulting services. It could be architect, testing, or engineering services.
Okay, so what you mentioned to us is that moving, you know, if we wanted to move forward, since SAC 2 is in progress, we have enough money to finish SAC 2, but discussion has to happen of the maintenance and facilities building because at that point, we'll still need about, I think, 4.7 to finish that if we wanted to move forward. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And just to add, Mr. Barrera, I know you asked, request for the specific amounts for each project. The only category that couldn't find was the auxiliary gyms. Everything else, those are the numbers, sir. Now, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Fierro.
Okay, moving on to ongoing non-bond projects. So we have the transportation electric bus charging stations. Contractors continue working on the underground utility connections. El Paso Electric Company has installed the transformers. And good news, last Friday, the charging stations were delivered at the site. So we're seeing more progress. Right now, we are 35%, but once the charging stations are installed, everything will move fast, faster, okay? Here's some progress photos of the site. You have any questions for this project, okay? Now, auxiliary gyms. All the auxiliary gyms, water fountains, the construction, it's 100%. Now, contractors are working punch lists, are working on close-up documents. So now will be internally, an internal work to close those projects, okay? And here's some progress photos of the last campuses, Middle Cooper, Jose, Helen Ball, and Horizon Heights. And moving on to the last project, Mountwood, Mountwood High School Parking Lot. So we still have to deliver by the end of March and to, to keep moving forward, that contractor has installed foundation and the platform. Once the bond tower is delivered, remember, we still need two weeks, more or less, to complete the installation. Any questions on this project? Okay, so that will conclude my report.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fierro. All right, moving on to the Socorro ISD Employee Health Clinic. Mr. Vasquez.
Good evening, President Najera and members of the board. Tonight, we have a presentation on the employee health clinic and the services and the benefits they provide to our employees and their families. And I just wanted to let you know that we did have an update to the presentation. What you have in the board packet was, has been updated. So we provided you with a hard copy of this and that's also what's gonna be presented up on the screen. But here to deliver the presentation, we have members of the clinic and I'm gonna start off by introducing Dr. Alba Nivares.
Hi, good evening, Board President Najera and members of the board. Nice to be here. So we were invited here today to give a clinic progress, I guess, for the past four years. But before we get started, I did wanna mention that I've been a family medicine physician now for about 15 years. I've worked throughout various organizations. I've seen many employee health clinics and I've never seen anything quite like this. And I'm really proud of what we've done here and I think that this concept was very innovative and forward-thinking back four years ago. And I'm just really excited that it's been an amazing benefit to the employees. And so I just wanted to thank everyone here, the board, and anybody who had any, you know, involvement with the start of the clinic because I think it's been amazing for the employees of SISD. So thank you. So to get started, on our agenda, I wanted to start off with what is the purpose of our clinic? And I know that was something that we thought about four years ago and, and part of the reason why I joined is that the whole purpose and the whole main goal of the clinic was to help the employees be healthier. So how do we do that? We do that by providing affordable and accessible healthcare for the team. We were trying to prevent any roadblocks from, you know, patients not getting adequate care. Sometimes they couldn't afford their co-pays or their, you know, their PCP was not available for another three months. And so that was kind of us coming in to bridge, to be able to give that, that, you know, care and good quality care to the patients. It was important to note that we were, when we started, we, we knew that this was not for profit. So what that means is that we were gonna charge a $10 fee for the patient to come in, be evaluated, get labs, get their medications, and go on their, on their way. And it was not gonna be billed through the insurance. So we were not gonna, you know, make profit, but we were going to help employees be healthier and it was gonna decrease the overall medical cost to the district. How is it gonna do that? We'll talk about that later. But one, just one classic example is if we know that if employees are healthier, that we will decrease catastrophic illness in the future, right? If we control their diabetes and their hypertension now, they won't have a heart attack and a stroke three, four years from now. So some of the things that we're doing here, we won't see for, for years ahead. But it is, it's always gonna be a benefit to have employees that are healthier. And I think this is the clicker, sorry. There it is. And so clinic services, so what do we provide? Where, when we first started, we really wanted to focus on wellness exams and annuals. So what does that entail? It means going, getting all your prevention done, which includes colonoscopies, mammograms. We wanted patients to, to, you know, be able to see their PCP regularly and, and for us to order those things for them. It opened in March 2020. Two weeks after we opened, COVID hit. So it was definitely a curve ball and we had to adjust. But I think it was important because, and it also enlightened me on the fact that we do also need to be there for same-day appointments for our patients. We need to be there also for that urgent care component. And so the clinic became what I thought of as a hybrid model where we, in my schedule, for example, I have 50% of patients that I see for annual care and then I also have 50% that I'm there available for if they have any urgent thing that came up. Swollen ankle, a pink eye, you know, anything like that. And we're able to accommodate them. And I think that the employees have been very receptive to that as well. We provide well-women exams, we provide in-house stat labs. So what that means is that, you know, when you go see your PCP, usually, most of the time, it's, the labs are being sent out to the request and so the employee will have a co-pay to pay and also it'll go through the insurance, right? And so what we did is we were able to get a Piccolo machine that does all of that in-house. And so when we go do an annual exam, we can get this CMP lipid A1C, which is all of the labs that you get in a routine care. And, and we're able to get them within 15 minutes. And that's also important because if you get it within 15 minutes, you can see if the patient is diabetic instantly, which means their care is expedited and we can treat them quicker. You know, so these are just benefits that we have in the clinic. Procedures, we do a various, you know, array of procedures to include joint injections, to laceration repairs. Just recently, I had a patient who cut himself with a knife during breakfast and he waited till the clinic opened to come in because he knew that, you know, if you go to the ER, you're gonna pay $1,000 for that laceration repair. He came to our clinic, paid $10. So he won and the district won because now they didn't have to pay that insurance claim. And so these are just some examples, but we do them routinely on a day-to-day basis. Again, telemedicine is something that started with COVID, obviously, right? And I think that we've taken advantage and we continue to use it, especially if a patient doesn't need an in-house physical exam. We can do a telemedicine. And that's super convenient for our employees because they can call us during their lunchtime, they can call us after school. They don't have to take half a day off of work to be able, to have to come in and get those results. And so I think offering that is, has been really, really great in terms of our clinic services. And so I think offering that is, has been really, really great in terms of our clinic services. What that zero cost DME means is if you, like, say you go to your primary care, and you twisted your ankle, you need a walking boot, that's a durable medical equipment, and that is the patient's responsibility. That's usually an out-of-pocket expense. And we have a lot of these things in the clinic, and we offer it for no cost. It's included with the ten-dollar fee. So in that case, you know, the employee can get their crutches, and they can get his walking boot and kind of, you know, go on his way. So it's, I mean, we offer a lot of them, we have nebulizers, pulse oximeters, many things that we offer for our patients. Vaccines, something that, you know, I was very proud of for our team. Because we, when COVID hit, you know, COVID vaccines, we were one of the first clinics to get it in the city. And as a result, we've given over a total of eleven thousand vaccines, which I think is amazing to the employees and their families. And of course, mental health, something that's definitely, it's difficult, it's hugely underserved, you know, in our city as well as nationwide. And so we're able to provide that type of help for our employees, and then we can refer them out as needed. Next slide, next slide is just, it's just how our schedule works, and I think I touched on this before, is that we have a hybrid model, which will take care of, you know, primary care as long, as well as urgent care. Our opening hours, since we started four years ago, have been Monday through Friday, seven AM to six PM, as well as Saturday, seven AM to twelve PM. And then this slide is just touching back again on, on the positive impact that the clinic has made. Just going back to our purpose, it's wellness for employees, you know, and, and just helping them be healthier. We want teachers to stay in the classroom and be there for their, for their students where they make a big impact. And so I think that that's where, you know, the importance of keeping our employees healthy comes in. Access to care, we always try to keep availability for same-day appointments. I think that's, that's been well-received, because we just recently got statistics that, from all the medical care that SISD employees and their families get, we see one-third of them. So they're utilizing the clinic, they're using the clinic, and one-third of that is not accounted for, it's not going through Aetna Insurance. It's just what we're seeing in our clinic. We provide increasing preventive care. I mean, we have plenty of examples where, you know, if the patient comes in, we get them colonoscopy on time, so they're able to catch a disease state, you know, cancer early on. And so that avoids highly, you know, high costs if we don't, you know, treat soon. Chronic condition management, I led a diabetic clinic for many years in Fabens, and I've kind of incorporated a lot of that to what I do here. We, we bring in, or, you know, bring in the patient, teach them how to use, you know, insulin or different things that they may need. We bring a dietitian on board, just to kind of give them well-rounded care for their chronic diseases. And we take the time. Low cost for district employees, I mean, it really does not get better than ten dollars for, for that fee. Reduction in healthcare expenditures, such as ER visits and specialty care. That's kind of what I touched on before, we stop the disease early, then it allows us to decrease cost, and it helps the patient as well. And decreasing costs associated with unscheduled employee absences. An example I gave, of course, is like the telemedicine, you know, that we're able to see them without them having to take time off to come in and see us. And reduce wait time. We pride on trying to be efficient. We do take our time with the patient, but we don't want them to miss all day, you know, to come see us. And so we, we work on that. We'll also have a, we're doing this as a team, so I'll have my next team member come up and, and go over the next part. And if there's any questions, we'll be here at the end. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Nevares. President Nahara, members of the board, my name is Lorena Eras Suarez. I am the clinic manager for the clinic. In front of you, you'll have an overview of what was provided to us from the budget office regarding our revenue and expenditures on how much, kind of an overall view of what it takes to run a clinic, how much money it takes to run a clinic. And just on an average, from our opening from twenty twenty to present, an average amount of funds that need to happen in order for the clinic to run properly would be about one point three million a year. It is increasingly from twenty twenty up until now. It'll also show you the revenue as well. Now, the revenue is the only revenue that comes into the clinic, and that is based on a ten-dollar fee that is collected at the clinic from the patient. Also, we want to make sure that you all are aware that this revenue does get deposited in the general health fund, so it goes back into the district.
Good afternoon, President Nahara, members of the board, I'm PA Raúl Yalobos. So a little introduction, so I did twenty years active duty, left in twenty twenty-one, in the middle of the pandemic, and this job landed perfect, because there was no jobs for me at the time. So my specialty is orthopedic surgery, but the last three years, I've been a member of Dr. Nevares' team, and I'm going to present the, the next numbers that go over the last four years. And academic year twenty-two, which is from twenty, from July first, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, which is a whole year of what the clinic has done for Team SISD. So over the course of four years, we've had over forty-one thousand patient interactions. This includes visits, lab draws, testing, encounters, from everything that happens in the clinic. So we're averaging a little over ten thousand visits per year. What I want to point out on this slide, if you look at that first, in October of twenty twenty, when the pandemic happened, Dr. Nevares, no, the clinic was still being manned, appropriately, it was understaffed, but they were able to see over two thousand patients for that month. So, and that's why that's that huge spike in that bar graph. The, the other thing is, over six thousand members of SISD have utilized the clinic, and those are the ones who've generated those over forty-one thousand encounters. Cumulatively, over the span of four years, no, SISD has avoided over seven million, almost eight million dollars in, in costs that would have been billed to insurances, and that's grossly underestimated. For the patients, if you look at it from their perspective, they've avoided close, over five million dollars in costs that they would have paid out of pocket for all those visits. So jointly, that's over twelve million, almost thirteen million that was avoided, right, on behalf of SISD and the patients that utilize the clinic. So for FY twenty-two, July first, twenty twenty-two, to June thirtieth of twenty-three, we've had over twelve thousand patient encounters that year, and the cost avoidance for SISD at that time was over two point three million. So again, if you look at the operating cost was one point three, we're still saving money, or avoiding, no, money to be billed to the district. There was nearly fifty thousand in revenue collected and deposited to the general fund. And again, for that year, the employees avoided paying over one and a half million on their behalf for co-pays and deductibles, right? So cumulatively, for that first full year that we have data for, no, it's almost four million in cost avoidance together. So I think Dr. Nevares touched, you know, touched on it earlier, that approximately one-third of the patients, or employees, I call them patients, no, I was, for everyone who uses the clinic, they're a patient, is utilizing the clinic. So that's one, twenty-eight to thirty percent, that's not being reported to, no, to Aetna. So it's not being billed, the district doesn't need to worry about paying out that amount. So with that being said, I'll be followed by Dr. Garcia, our pharmacist.
Good evening, President Nahara, team members of the board. I'm Dr. Garcia, I am the pharmacist, and so I'm going to talk about drugs tonight. Okay, I'm just kidding, just the numbers, really. So I've been a pharmacist for about eighteen years, working with this wonderful team here, and then this wonderful, unique setting that you all created four years ago. And so it took a while to, to, to start building up our numbers, but as you can see, as we opened up in twenty twenty, we were just still a baby. Twenty twenty-one is really when we started seeing more of a, an influx of prescriptions. And so from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, it's really rose from about ten thousand to almost twenty thousand prescriptions per year. That's about a two-hundred percent return on, on investment. That's really huge. So around three years, and pharmacy, in the pharmacy world, that's when most pharmacies start to see a profit. It might, might be that way for most businesses. Right now, we've only been open for about a month and a half. For this year, twenty twenty-four, we've already filled five thousand prescriptions, where we're projected to hit around thirty thousand prescriptions if we continue at the rate we're going at. So that will be an increase of three hundred percent increase of return on investments. So, so not only do we, are we filling more prescriptions, but we're, now we have two different wholesalers, and we're trying to work on our third one with our purchasing department. And so this allows us to buy medications at a lower cost. And this is what's great, and save, this will save a whole lot for the district. Because if you were to go to Walgreens, CVS, they're going to try to bill as much as they possibly can with Aetna. With us, they're going to get that generic as, as a zero co-pay. So for example, if you have a medication that's going to cost a hundred to twenty dollars per one bottle, we might be able to get that for about two dollars, you know? So we're saving a whole lot on, on, depending on, on the certain medication. Now, we're able to, we know that the, all the employees are very busy, and so we're only open at five-thirty in the pharmacy, but, and we know they can't always get to the pharmacy, so we try to reach out to every single employee and deliver every medication to them if they're unable to get to us. So we have, and we're a two-person job, so my technician, Stephanie, she will go out and deliver to every campus throughout the week. And so this allows everyone to get their medication, not have to worry about going after work and waiting in that long line, as you've seen at CBS, Walgreens, I know I've seen them every time I get out, there's about five cars in that lane, and with us, we'll provide it right after work. If you guys have ever gone to a pharmacy, I'm not sure if you've ever been able to speak to a pharmacist, but I spend a lot of time with every single patient on every single medication. And that's nice, because it allows me to connect with the patient, it's not so much about the medication, but getting to know the patient. So we build a rapport there. And then I also work on medication therapy management, I work along Dr. Nevares and our PA, our nurse practitioner, so we can come up with the best therapy for that patient. I'll turn it over to, I believe it's, Banena again, thank you for your.
Thank you, Eric. We're going to go over real quick just a summary of what we just spoke about, and then right after we're done, I'm going to turn it over to our nurse practitioner, who's going to give you a little bit more information. But just so we can take a look at a summary of what we've spoke about, we've seen about a little bit over forty-one thousand patients. We've filled about forty-four thousand prescriptions, if not more. We've been able to have the cost avoidance for SISD of over seven million, and for employees and patients of over five million. We've also given about eleven thousand vaccines, given to Team SISD as well as the community. And we approximately serve about one-third of the employees of the district. One thing to keep in mind is that with thirteen full-time employees, the clinic is able to serve a district that has more than nine thousand employees. And having that said, I would like to introduce you to some of my awesome team that were able to make it tonight, if they can stand up for me. Thank you, guys, for the awesome job that you do. And just keep in mind, there's only thirteen of us. I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
Good evening, President Nahara and members of the board, thank you so much for having us. My name is Jennifer Acosta, I am the nurse practitioner over at our amazing clinic. And I actually just wanted to talk to you a little bit about some really awesome clinic success stories that we have, that I would like to share. As Dr. Nevares had mentioned earlier, preventive care is, is huge for us. And a really great example of this, of course, you mentioned colonoscopy, colon cancer screenings. The prevalence of colon cancer does increase with age, and we do recommend that patients forty-five years and older get a colon cancer screening, gold standard is a colonoscopy. And we did have a gentleman, a patient of ours, a dependent, actually, of one of our employees, a fifty-eight-year-old gentleman, that came in for an annual visit with Mr. Yalobos. We gave him all of the information and education and records to the colon cancer screening. He went ahead and got that taken care of. Long story short, they did end up finding thirteen polyps, seven of which were high-risk for cancer. So with that being said, he is now getting his regularly monitored screenings, which started off at a year, now he's cleared to do it every three years. So he was very happy about that, that we helped him with that. Another really great thing that the clinic offers is our weight loss program for eligible employees of the district. We really do help to establish lifestyle modifications with healthy eating and guidance with their diet, along with exercise regimen tailored for that specific patient. Overall, it does improve quality of life, and secondary awesome benefits of this, it does help to maintain healthy blood pressures, lowers cholesterol levels, maintains healthy blood sugars, and increases the patient's overall confidence and physical and mental well-being. So we, we pride ourselves in just being advocates for our patients with their weight loss. We bring them in every month, we weigh them, and we go over food diaries with them to make sure that they're on the proper path to, to getting that weight off. And last but not least, diabetes, prevalence of that is, you know, it's pretty high in El Paso with our amazing diet that we have here. And, you know, many of our hard-working district transportation employees are managed at the clinic for their diabetes. And so we like to help, you know, we help to manage their diabetes and help to avoid any obstacles that they can, that, that can be encountered when driving a commercial vehicle like our school buses that transport our SISD students. And this is all mandated by the Federal Motor Carrier and Safety Administration. So we tailor diabetic care to each of our patients, again, for ultimately for the safety of our SISD students. And in closing, you know, our future mission and goal at the clinic, of course, greater cost avoidance, which is extremely important. But more importantly, it's going to be the benefit of healthier employees, which is going to positively impact our district in many, many ways. So again, thank you so much for having us, I'll give it back to Lorena.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Whoever can answer it in your group. This is for the employee and their, their dependents, right? Whoever's on the plan and their spouses, correct? Okay. I'm not going to argue anything about healthcare, because it's expensive, and I think it's a good initiative that we're doing. It's a benefit for the employee, and I think we, I personally think we need to expand it, because you only have one clinic. And we need to look at the cost-effectiveness of expanding one, because there's people that live on the Far East side, and there's people that live in the city of Socorro that are employees, and it would be more convenient for them, and we can help drive the cost down more, and instead of only one-third of the employees attending, if we can get it up to eighty percent, whatever, because if you can save somebody on, in fact, I wrote it on specialty prescriptions, because that seems to be the thing that really dries up costs, and on these, on the employees that have to pay out of pocket. Whatever we can do to help them, and if a proposal needs to be put together, I think one needs to be brought before the board to say, "Look, we can put one out on the Far East side, or in the city of Socorro, and start building it to provide more benefits to the employees, and not just sit it over here," it's at Mountwood, right? Correct? Yeah, that's, that's, and that's way on one side of the, of the school district. And we need to make it available, and maybe even expanding the hours of operation to help people that just get off of work, or because they're tutoring or whatever, and they can't make it with their, their child and time, you know? So I feel the proposal on that, to help, especially with the rising costs of, of our other plan and, and the money going into that, and we can offset that cost, I think this would be a great idea for us to take the initiative, and start going in that direction and saying, "We can provide more," and we'll be here to support that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, just a quick question. Thank you for your service and for saving our lives, literally. Again, thank you during the COVID time, you guys put up the drive-through clinic and did all the, all the stuff that you had to do. So thank you, Doc, you, you guys did a great, an amazing job. You guys did a great, an amazing job. I have a question for with Aetna. Do we get a reimbursement when we have the clinic or if we expand? Does that help us at all on the Aetna side?
So I can tell you that it has been mentioned to us before that Aetna did provide the district a bonus or bonus or a credit, I should say, towards the health fund in order to expand our clinic.
Okay.
We haven't moved on that at all.
So that we possibly do get a benefit from having you all help us through even our own insurance through Aetna. The other question that I have is, or really it's for our P R team. I think this information we got, let's share it with all of our employees. I love the fact that you're delivering the meds, you know, even though we're located in Mottwood. You know, you're actually doing that service, I think, just getting that information out. I don't think everybody knows. We do, but we really don't. So, you know, if we could do a campaign, you know, for our clinic and then you're like, stop it, no. But I think that'll help because that way we could truly maximize, you know, all of the slots. You know, just like we heard, that way we could do a little bit more cost savings because that's what we're looking for. Ideas to help our district, and I think this is a great innovative one that we've seen results. And then for employees, is it just active employees? Or is it, for example, if you have a community member that has insurance, can they come to the clinic? Or is it employees, active employees only?
It is for full-time active employees only.
Okay.
And their dependents, of course, yes. But it is only for full-time. It's not for subs or part-time, just full-time.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you for everything you guys do. I did ask before, and I know I was mentioned, one of the locations on South of freeway was either Healy because I know there's a vacant building there and then Socorro High School because there's also a building that's still kind of, you know, what they're going to do with it. So, I mean, is there any information? You know, I was told by the superintendent at one point that he was going to bring that information forward. But I have yet to ever hear anything, but I mean.
We're looking at some options at expanding, possibly with the site that you mentioned over at Socorro High School. There's the old science wing that's still there. There would need to be some work done to that. But that's a possible location, even maybe it's just as a satellite. Maybe a couple of days a week, we'll have some folks out there. That way we can offer these benefits to folks on both sides of the freeway. So that's, that's one of the areas we're looking at currently.
Okay, so you guys already done some analysis of that, what that would look like?
We've done some initial analysis, but not, nothing in depth. But that's something we can certainly look at now that we, we've gotten some information from you all. We can definitely move forward with that.
Could you please provide?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know what? Sorry, I do got one more thing. Now that they mentioned T R S, is that something that we can do for retired teachers? Is that, is that an option for retired employees? If they fall under T R S, I mean, is that, is that something that's possible?
You mean to be able to see the patients?
Yes.
I'm not quite sure.
Is that some, is that, I don't know, if it's a possibility, is that something?
Look into it possibly. It was initially just set up just for full-time active employees. But we can surely look at that option.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on then, item eight, the strategic plan priority two, Dr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mr. Nahara, board trustees. This is a presentation of UTEP last more meeting. This is the strategic plan update priority two. And it's our turn for H R to present. And at this time, Angelica Carrera is going to present it.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Good evening, Mr. Nahara and members of the board. I'm Angelica Carrera, Director of Human Resources. I'll be providing you with an update on the strategic plan on priority two. So these are the strategic objectives. Two point one is recruit high-quality talent. Two point two is capacity building of all staff at all levels and two point three, employee satisfaction. So those are the ones that we work on on a daily basis. So on two point one, some of the things that would have, that we have done is that we have hosted six and attended seven job fairs between March of twenty twenty-three and this March of twenty twenty-four. We include all, including all sorts of job fairs in the area, specifically the ones at UTEP. We do host our own for our own UTEP residents here. We have two every, every single year. We do attend E P C C job fairs for Bliss. We've attended a couple of them there. We'd had an S I S D job expo this past July and it was a great success. And we also are going to attend the UTEP S L P job fair this coming end of the March, of this March. And then also, H R will be reaching out to upcoming Texas and New Mexico University graduates. So that way we can recruit some of the talent that's coming out of those universities. And then those pictures, of course, are just to showcase some of the fun stuff that we have when we do have these job fairs. And continuing on with two point one, we actually have also attended other community events such as the Weather Fest, Chihuahua's S I S D Night, Military Connected Families and the Health Expo to expand some of the marketing and enhance our recruitment for S I S D. So during any of those events, what we have is we have our own little table and we have brochures, we have a way of how they can access our job website and all sorts of other information. Continuing with two point one. So in collaboration with other departments such as Public Relations and Academic Services, we have marketing plans in place to recruit, including digital advertisement, and that's the one that you see there. And so these flyers are distributed across New Mexico or they can access them on our website with the financial incentive to relocate to El Paso. And this one specifically for speech-language pathologists, educational diagnosticians and school psychologists. Then now moving on to two point two, which is capacity building of all staff at all levels. So with that one, in collaboration with the Special Education Department, we are developing a new internal recruiting initiative, which is learn, grow in advance to fill vacancies for diagnostician, speech-language pathologist and licensed school psychologist. So now these plans are underway. We want to build cohorts with Sol Ross State University and UTEP. So that way we can build capacity on current employees and assist them in attaining their master's degree and licensure for these hard-to-fill positions. A survey was conducted to our S I S D staff to gather some detailed information of interest of these special education positions. And this is an example of one of the questions on the survey. And of course, we were asking, do you have a bachelor's degree? What is your bachelor's degree? And this one is, which one would you be interested in? That's the main one that we really want to see where the interest is. So on the speech-language pathology, there was nine hundred and eighteen responses, but only six hundred and sixty-eight answered them. So for the speech-language pathologists, we had thirty-eight percent interest, diagnostician twenty-two percent, and school psychologist, we had forty percent. And for two point three, to increase employee satisfaction and retention. So we are proud to say that last year we were at ninety-six percent fill rate on teacher vacancies. We are now at ninety-eight percent. So we have really worked really hard, along with our principals and all our departments, in order to fill a lot of the vacancies that we've had for quite a long time. And of course, the Department of Human Resources also offers a district-wide wellness program. Activities and events include free lunch and learn sessions, onsite wellness screenings and health expos. We've had the free lunch and learns here. And we've had massages. We've also learned about our heart rate and our heart and those of us that sit on, on a desk all day long on our chairs. I'm sorry, not on the desk, on the chair. So that, you know, we need to get up and move and what exercise we can do while we're sitting on our chairs. And that's it as far as the update on, on the strategic objectives of priority two. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned that we did, I think it was five thousand dollar incentive. How many, how many individuals have we recruited with that incentive?
So unfortunately, we haven't had anybody just yet. So, but we're hoping, we really are hoping. And that's why we're doing other, also recruiting events, so that that way we can get them here.
And then the other question I have, right, today I received an email and the email mentioned something about on the website before we had, and again, I'm, I don't want to read my phone, but something like we had fifty vacancies for, or unfilled vacancies. And then all of a sudden they disappeared and now we only show like one or two. So I don't know if that's correct or not, but that was an email that I received. Just so, just for transparency, that way the community knows what vacancies are still there. And if there's a glitch, it's a glitch, but that way they know that to please apply.
Yes.
Over sixty.
Yes, it was sixty-two certified positions that Dr. Carmen requests us to freeze until further notice.
And is that impacting students? Do we have?
Yes, that's one thing. And the other thing is that we transitioned from one system to another for the applications, which is from Muniz to Skyward. And last week, it was shut down. And today, Monday, we already start with Skyward. And it's already live, right? It's already live and it's working, little things here and there. But still, the certified positions are not open, right?
So what message would you like to give to anybody that's, that's viewing and wants to apply? Continue to apply or?
Yes, like as soon as we open again, those certified positions, of course, we want people to know and, and apply. We have those vacancies still. Those vacancies are for this year. So we have schools that need those certified positions. And, and it's, it's not a big number. I want to emphasize that. We filled out, as Angelica mentioned, ninety-eight percent of our teacher vacancies. We have approximately twenty-seven hundred teachers, almost three thousand teachers. And it's just about fifty or sixty teacher positions specifically. We have more, but administrator positions or auxiliary or other positions. But for classroom instruction, it's, it's like, oh, eighty-one, which is still like ninety-six, ninety-seven percent. But yes, of course, we want to apply that. So we have good numbers to fill up the vacancies. I think it's just a transition and strategy from Dr. Carmen just to work on the, on the positions for, for the schools.
Mr. Vasquez, in the absence of Dr. Carmen, can we get a status, an update of some sort as to what the plan is for those positions? When will they be posted? So that we're informed on? What the plan is for them?
Yes, he mentioned, he mentioned to me that he will let me know today, but I think he's absent.
Right.
Yeah.
Can we just add the rationale as to why and then when it should be opening again or unfreezing?
Right. Did you hear that, Dr. Gonzalez?
Okay, what was there?
When they're going to, I guess, unfreeze the timeline when it should reopen? And then as an indication as to why they were frozen? I know that's not coming from you, that's, that should be coming from. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the reason for the freeze? I'm not aware of it, you know, I'm sitting here. Is there a reason given for the freeze?
Yes, I think that they have a pending meeting with checking master schedules of, and from the campuses. And supposedly it was today, right?
What we're doing is we're going through our master schedules right now in staffing and see if we have any excess teachers that could possibly fill these positions before we open it up again to the public. So that's what we're working on right now.
All right, do you then have, do you know when that will be complete? So that we'll know of those sixty-some-odd positions?
We started working on it today and then, of course, he left. And so we are scheduled to meet with him early next week. But we do have stacks of classroom schedules that we're actually filtering through. And we're looking to, and we've been going through staffing too, to see which schools are, are, it seems like they may lose positions and which schools may gain positions and certifications. So we're working all the numbers out. It should not be long at all. But we just wanted to be sure we had a place for everybody and see if possibly we have people in the district who will be able to take those positions first.
How long should that take, more or less?
I would say less than a week.
Less than a week?
Yes, sir.
So Ms. Parham, that brought in one other question. So you're looking at if we have any excess teachers currently. So classrooms will be consolidated at this time and then teachers moved?
No, at this point, we're looking at the vacancies that have been open for quite a while. And we're seeing which teachers are going to be accessed and then seeing if they're interested in those positions. And we would wait, of course, until the end of the year to do so. But we would know which ones so we could go ahead and have a plan and then see how many openings we have at the end.
Okay, but we're not going to move. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? And we're working on it as we speak, so we're going to make this quick.
All right. Ms. Parham, Dr. Gonzalez, Ms. Nahara, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, continuing then, number nine, consent agenda.
Michael.
Sir.
I want to ask if we can move executive session, the first part. The meeting is to be closed for discussion for legal counsel regarding the forensic audit report to receive advice regarding the findings in the report. Can we move that at the, to this moment right now? The, the audit may give us information to help us for the rest of the agenda and give us insight and information that we may require to make the right decision moving forward.
Mr. Castellano, you're making a motion to move executive session up to right now?
Yeah, the executive session, we don't need to move the, the whole thing. What's the other one, intruder detection? We can just do the first part unless, unless we just take care of the executive right now.
I think we can.
Okay, I make the motion that we move the executive.
Motion by Mr. Castellano.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrera, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes. All right, with that then, the meeting is to be closed for discussion with legal counsel regarding forensic audit report number two and to receive advice regarding findings in report and to receive intruder detection, audit report findings under Texas Government Code Sections five five one dot zero seven one, five five one dot zero seven four and five five one dot zero seven six. The time is eight oh six. The date is March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
We're back in session from executive. The time is 9:12 PM. The date is March 18th, 2024, and we have a quorum. We'll continue then with the agenda, item number nine, consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? I'm pulling items H and I.
And sir, if I could pull item J?
Have motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda with the exceptions of items H, I, and J.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Thank you. Continuing then with consent agenda items H and I, and I'd like to take them both together. Ms. Fierro, so this is for the Eastment agreements. However, there was a question that I had on maybe there was, since they're asking us for Eastment access, if we could in return ask them for something also, some type of access, et cetera. And my thinking was simply that it's better to ask and try and obtain that right now before we grant the Eastment because it leaves us in a better position. Did we pursue that? Is it?
Yes, well, part of the conversations with TRE, they are the engineers that are managing the request from Horizon, Horizon Mud and Mr. The other one.
Wellfield.
Wellfield, yes, sir. So I request information from them, and basically the only portion that they are requesting access for is just the corner of that property. So it's just they're gonna construct a kind of channel to redirect the water from the Arroyo to that channel. So basically, they asking for that 30 feet of property, but they will maintain it. That district will not pay fees, maintenance, or anything like that. That's an advantage for us. Now, in the future, they were thinking about in the other side of their property, I don't know who's the owner, but they were thinking on giving us access through the transportation area to the IT. I'm sorry, A10, right? So that's, but I don't have anything in writing. It was just part of the discussion. They, as a matter of fact, they answered my question at worst, what are the benefits for the district? So basically, that's a benefit. I have so today.
Okay, so these are, but they are permanent Eastments, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so one of my questions is if we ever decide to build out in the future, is that going to inhibit us doing any type of build out within the other property? Does that limit that piece of it?
The thing is, it's just a small portion, basically in the corner or of SISD property. So it will not affect anything. It will if we plan to construct something in the other area. So basically, it doesn't affect the district.
And they're not willing to put it in writing? They are gonna give us access for transportation?
That will be, we planning to have another meetings with them, but they always mention that option in the future. That we have discussions with the owner of that property and with SISD administration.
Again, that's just my input that I would like to have it in writing if we are gonna, and I know that it's for the betterment of all, but that way we do, that in the future, we do have the ability to have transportation, to have an inlet and outlet that would help us.
But also the, what they, they're requesting for future, it will benefit both, both property owners. I mean, I think for future, it will benefit our district, and again, Horizon and other property owners, they will work with us because they know that we are there, right, and we're not going anywhere. But again, that will be up to you to.
Well, it's an Eastment that they're requesting, and I know they're not asking for an Eastment just for, you know, for fun. It's something that they need. I'm comfortable moving forward just, you know, on their word that, you know, they'll work with us in the future because, you know, that certainly does, I mean, especially if they've already committed to it.
Yes, especially Horizon Mud. They are truly giving us water services to answer in Horizon Heights.
Right.
So just to keep, you know, the relationship.
Since I pulled a motion to approve consent agenda items H and I.
Second.
Discussion? All right, I went out of order. Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes. Item J, Ms. Macias.
Yes, on that one, I just wanted to ensure that we were gonna update policy. I think whenever it was shared with us during the finance committee, it mentioned that this is just our current practice. That's why it's here. However, our policy does not indicate so that it was gonna be updated in the future.
Yes, ma'am, policy CI local will be in the next policy meeting as well as the finance meeting, and we will make sure that it goes into the next board meeting so that it reflects that the listing of auction items does need to go to the board.
Sounds good.
Motion to approve item J.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Macias, seconded by Ms. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Moving on then to new business. Consider approval of teacher employment contract and additional administration recommendations for the 2024-25 school year. Dr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Nahara, and members of the board. The administration is requesting approval of teacher employment contracts, including librarians, nurses, counselors, speech therapists, and education diagnosticians, and one additional administration, is that name you have it with you on your packet, recommendations for the 24-25 school year. This information has been verified by the Department of Human Resources and was presented to you in your packet. Administration recommends consideration and approval of the item as presented.
Motion to approve?
Motion made by Mr. Guerra, seconded by Mr. Varela. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
I need to abstain, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Nahara, can I just say something? A couple of months ago, the media has been talking about our district saying that we're gonna lay off people. So hopefully, our employees realize that this month, today and last month, we approved all these contracts.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, the employees will have some reassurance.
Yes, that's correct. Last month was approve all that administrative contracts, and this month, the teacher and all the positions that I mentioned, and it has been the normal HR cycle each year.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Item B then. Consider approval of resolution for assignment of fund balance. Ms. Perez.
I apologize for not introducing myself. President Nahara, members of the board. My name is Vicki Perez, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, we're presenting a resolution for assignment of fund balance. This amount of $3,260,947 was originally set aside as assigned fund balance on June 18th, 2013. And so this was initially meant for E, I'm sorry, let me see, it was for.
E-rate?
E-rate.
E-rate, thank you, and for encumbrances. Since then, the practice and the accounting of E-rate has changed and does not belong in fund balances, and the accounting practice has not been reflected as part of this resolution. So we want to make sure that we are moving this assigned back into unassigned. All the commitments originally for E-rate and the encumbrances have been met. Any questions?
A second.
Motion to approve made by Mrs. Nahara, seconded by Mrs. Macias. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Next item. Also, Ms. Perez, consider approval of Seventh Amendment lease with freight exchange.
Yes, sir, this is for, this is an amendment to the lease that was originally done in 2008. And each year, this leasing company, which is right behind the police department, they increment their lease option by $500. The monthly amount for this year is $12,000 per month, and I do want to note that we will be seeking other options on what we can do with that, whether it's renting directly with them or renting through another third party. But we will be looking for some other opportunities or allowing other opportunities for others.
And Ms. Perez, I'd also like, I think we, I mentioned this to you, to discuss or to maybe assess what is fair market value. Because I know, you know, certainly freight exchange has been a good tenant, and it is increasing. Just looking across, you know, the real estate market, it's climbed significantly. And so I think it's just incumbent upon us to make sure that we are getting fair market value for this area as well.
Absolutely. We're gonna be discussing that with CRB, our real estate person that we, he can help us with that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Have motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Nahara, seconded by Ms. Garedeao. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Thank you, Ms. Perez.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on then to item D, discussion and possible action regarding proposals for superintendent search services. As everybody knows, Dr. Carmen has tendered his resignation effective as of 6:30, so we do need to initiate the superintendent search process, which starts with the RFQ. I know some information has been shared as far as what the criteria is. Go back to that. Qualification statement. National recruitment, firm's history, former company names, number of employees, success rate, action plan, placement guarantee, mobility history of place candidates, school district experience, five references, and current clients. Ms. Perez, please remember that I also wanted to add historical impending litigation.
Yes, that one was actually sent out on your Friday packet, the list that was revised, and it does include business disputes and outstanding litigations for the last five years. That will be part of the rubric.
Perfect. Just want to make sure, since it's not reflected in the agenda. One other item. This says current clients and then five references. For the five references, can we get total number of candidate pools?
Yes, sir.
Please, as well. All right, so with this then, of course, to issue the RFQ, we do need a motion.
Motion to approve with adjustments as you verbalized.
Motion made by Mrs. Macias, seconded by Mr. Varela. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. All right. We did previously move executive session, so we've already completed that. Mr. Blanco then, next item is the grievance.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board. The attorney for the grievant has asked that we postpone this an additional time and work on a special setting where it works with his calendar and the board's calendar. It's just, through no fault of his own, it's been a conflict with getting this done, and we didn't want to force him to hold a hearing when they're not prepared to do so. So we'll be resetting that with a new date, and I'll communicate that to Ms. Deo.
Right. And Mr. Blanco, I think it's the desire of the board, maybe that we have a special session only to accommodate, you know, grievances, to minimize the inconvenience to the employees, make sure that we're able to listen to them and give them the due attention. Do we need motion for that, or is just asking for that sufficient?
It's not on the agenda, so you're gonna have to revise your policy. DGBA currently provides that the consideration of the appeal will be at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. Obviously, it's subject to the availability of the party. Administration's always made it a point, I think, at the board's direction, to keep it employee-friendly. So my recommendation to HR, and we've talked about it, is to revise policy DGPA to allow for special settings of these grievances so that they're not at the end of a long board meeting, which is difficult on the employees at times. If this meeting is early, it's 9:30. But if it was 10:30 to 11, it's kind of tiresome. So we're gonna be recommending a change to that policy.
Okay. Can we see that it gets at the next policy meeting?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. With that then, there is no more business before this board. We're adjourning at 9:27 PM. The date is still Monday, March 18th, 2024. We're adjourned.